I guess we could approve the minutes and put a poll on the.
Yeah.
I was going to call the meeting to order. Well, rise and say the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under cloud indivisible, liberty, justice for all. And I'm guessing there's no call to speak to us on any non-agenda item.
Right.
And. So the first item is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion and second in a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then the. If we want, we can put our our attend to be item and go forth with staff reports on current events.
Sure. Yeah, Chair members of the design review board, thanks for being here tonight, so. As you know, we meet weekly with our general contractor Aiken Gardner, it's usually Thursday mornings at their job site trailer. We had our meeting this morning. They're making really good progress on all the infrastructure for Litchfield Square. If you haven't seen it, there's two bathrooms that'll be public restroom buildings that'll be built on the Litchfield Square Park site. Restroom building A. This is her, she thinks the meeting's at seven. Asking if she can. Come over now, her office is right over here on Indian School, so I'll let you know what she says. So bathroom building one or A is pretty much, the the shell is pretty much completed, it's a block. Construction, the stucco finishes. Been worked on this week, you can see it from Litchfield Road, Wigwam Boulevard. There's a smaller restroom building. Also on the park site. That hasn't gone vertical yet, that one will be located off of Desert Avenue. The electrical work has been or the electrical feed to the building has been brought to the site for the bathroom building, we're expecting that. That that building will start construction probably in the next month or so. You approved, DRB approved the design plans for that at your March meeting. Yes, I'm on my way, Lydia says, so hopefully she's at her office. Desert Avenue right out here, just north of Wigwam, if you go into the shops and restaurants on the east side of Desert, it's a little tight through there. That road is being completely rebuilt and it's. If you go out there today like I did with our contractor, you can see their concrete work is underway on the west side of the. Of Desert, it's gonna look really nice, there'll be new driveway approaches into the parking field east of City Hall. The. New pedestrian ramps right on the corner of Desert and Wigwam are pretty much forward to the northwest corner. And then probably around June seventeenth, the east side of Desert will be. There'll be some lane restrictions, we'll have it signed and marked. So the public knows where they can and cannot go, but the east side of the road will be built next. Honeysuckle Street next to the Ribbons Tea House and the. The restaurants and the salon is pretty much done. There's some cleanup work that some signs, street signs and other things that are underway.
The question about what used to be a driveway.
Yes.
Now it's just a huge curb drop off.
Yes.
Because somebody or some way they decided that shouldn't be a passageway, what's gonna end up happening with that and why did it get changed?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Dari, that's a good question, so about. About a year ago, we had a neighborhood meeting with. Anybody that wish wished wished to attend. It was really focused on the merchants on Honeysuckle. So we had one. One attendee there and that was the proprietor for Ribbons Tea House, nice guy, his name's Joel. The area that you're mentioning is the south side of Honeysuckle between Old Litchfield Road and Desert Avenue, we closed five driveways. The area that you mentioned that is now closed off, it's it's supposed to be a fire lane.
Good, good luck with that, hope we're fully loaded.
Yeah, we've had the Goodyear Fire Marshal out and he's blessed, there's a amenable curb on the south side of Honeysuckle, so if. Goodyear Fire needed to. Go down that way, they could get up on the curb and drive a truck between the salon and the. The brewery.
The brewery, right, yeah.
We've had a little bit of an issue. With people parking in there where they shouldn't be and we're working to address that. The other driveways, I don't remember when Ribbons used to be a bank back in the day, you, some of you probably do. The drive-through on the east side of the building, the actual. Structure where you would put the tube in to do your banking, that facility is still, a piece of equipment is still there. That driveway which was for the drive-through lane has been closed permanently. And along with the other driveways and since we did the road reconstruction there around Labor Day. We really have not gotten a lot of complaints really from anybody, we've gotten a few, a resident called me. Around Labor Day, asking me what was, you know, what's going on and I explained. To her or husband, the road reconstruction and the driveways were going to be closed and. I think for the most part, people are getting used to how to maneuver around that area. There's a pretty substantial parking field on what are lots five, six, seven that are north of Honeysuckle. And I see people, I see employees parking over there and like walking over to the restaurants, you'd see their uniforms.
It is kind of problematic actually where Ribbons is because I went there the other day and like. Because the parking is angled in a way that you would then have to like back all the way out because you can't go forward anymore. So I was actually, I wondered like, are they gonna redo that parking or?
We, I'll I'll try to be polite on my response to that, so the. The the owner of the property is. Is not Joel, the proprietor for the tea house. We walked that site with Aiken Gardner, I did around October and they put a plan together. To reconfigure the angled parking to ninety degree, we don't like the backing out, I've been over there to to pick up. You know, tea and I've seen people pull in, get their order and then try to back out, it's not optimal. Both Rena and I have worked with the owner on a couple of different, the owner of the land on a couple of different. Issues and projects, we've asked him. To politely asked him to recon, have that area reconfigured. Frankly, he's not interested in that work, Aiken Gardner was gonna do it at their cost. And just build him directly and it was a per, easy for me to say, it was a pretty nominal cost. And he wasn't interested in that, unfortunately. There's also some other things unrelated to the square, but like there's a east of Ribbons, there's a trash enclosure that. Doesn't have a trash enclosure on it, it should and.
He did.
That's then, okay, I haven't been there before, okay, good, so it, some of it's growing pains and trying to. Try to work with our partners to to fix things and get things cleaned up, so. Yeah, the ribbon situation is not ideal. What else can I tell you? The new roadway west of City Hall is La Loma Avenue, if you looked at it, it there's, it's been at a standstill because there's a utility conflict. Right at Wigwam Boulevard, so employees. That. Try to use the parking lot on the north side of City Hall. Obviously, you cannot use La Loma right now, the utility conflict was found about a month ago. That's being rectified, so what happened is when Aiken was trying to build the driveway connection to Wigwam. And stop me if I'm giving you too much detail, but. There's some very shallow utilities there that are not city utilities, it's a Cox communications line and. And so they're working to fix that and drop the lines so that. Aiken Gardner can finish that connection and hopefully we can reopen that street and get people, people in and out of City Hall.
Mission. How can that be that they had no idea, first because the elevation. The final elevation where the sidewalk is and stuff is gonna be dropping eighteen, twenty, twenty-two inches, how did they not know? That there was some sort of utilities going underneath there and I don't care if it's Cox or not. Because it's in the roadway, Blue State would know exactly or reasonably close or Cox or whoever else is in there would come out and locate it. You know, something, two and two aren't ended up to four here.
Yes, good, good points, the the response to that is that. You're correct on Blue State, they didn't have anything in their records. They do now that the. The contractor's done what's called pot-holing, you would know what that is. And identified a lot of hand digging because they didn't want to break any, any of the utilities. Damage any of the utilities, so it it's now been plotted on on Blue State and. The the finished work will get as built, hopefully that work takes place next week with the utility relocation and then we can. Finish the street, a lot of its old utilities that.
Well, then I know on. What's on the east side of?
The Owen.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I mean, just watching that was a comedy of years.
Yeah.
You know, being in the business.
They found water, like they on the right in that area where the. Driveway will go or the roadway will go. Aiken Gardner found an old foundation for one of the old Goodyear Farms. Outbuildings, if you will, we found some old.
Hopefully it was the old doghouse.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were able to to dig that out to. Get that cleared out, so they're finding all kinds of fun stuff. The scale that you might remember outside of, actually outside of Rena's office was removed about two months ago, that was the old. Area for Goodyear Farms where actually where Rena sits now, there used to be a pay window and so the. We can imagine the clerk that would sat in sat in there back in the day probably had one of those green. Plastic visors on and they would weigh the trucks empty and full and then they would pay, pay the drivers for the. For the crops they were bringing in, so the scale was on the plans to be removed and I was thought about six, eight years ago.
Any of it's eligible?
The Historical Society came by, I helped coordinate that.
Oh, so they got parts of it?
They got parts of it, a lot of the structure, once they pulled the. The actual deck lid where the scale was underneath there, there wasn't really a lot to salvage, if you will, there were some. Old metal I-beams and things that. They weren't particularly of historical significance, but there were some pretty large bearings and some other parts that. For the scale housing that the Historical Society came by and picked up, so.
And the big clock size.
Yeah.
Scale, you know, weigh weigh diameter that showed.
Yeah. Village Parkway on the north side of the square is pretty much done, it's not. Our Public Works Department is now conducting the landscape maintenance for Village Parkway from. Litchfield Road east to about Desert Avenue, the section adjacent to the church at Litchfield Park. We have, we have not been asked to do a a final inspection on that by Aiken Gardner. I know some of the church staff fairly well from my work with the city of Glendale, one of their. Facilities people, I I used to work with them back in the day in Glendale. I know the church is anxious to get that road opened up, we've got brand new parking just outside their. Their front door and they're they're anxious to use it, so. You'll probably be seeing that road open up here maybe this summer, so the road looks beautiful and the date palms were installed. Were planted probably about a month ago, so it's really coming together, the park, park is looking good. It's got, most of its turf has been planted, so it's looking good.
Any, any updates? Is she supposed to be like slow, like below grade and?
Correct, on the north side of the park, I don't, I don't have an exhibit with me, but on the north side of the park, like where restroom building one is along Village Parkway on the east, the northeast corner of the park. Is a, there's a plan for a future amphitheater. If you go out there and look through the construction fence, you can see where it's been graded, it'll it'll slope down from. West to east, the stage will be on the east side. Of of the very east side side of the park next to Desert Avenue, the amphitheater will be a separate CIP project. Down the line, but we're anticipating that our special events people will. Start having events there on like temporary stages, probably sometime this fall perhaps. So. What else can I tell you, go ahead.
Lot three over there, when, when, when is something really gonna happen?
So lot three, I brought to you to DRB last November, some updated plans. A couple of things have happened since then, hi, come on in.
Hi.
Hello.
Come on in. I, we're just giving a staff update and then we'll we'll vote your residential present. So lot three, if you look at the, read the minutes for the May council meeting. The city manager took an item for, we're selling lot four. To that same development group, they want to buy lot four and that's the lot, if you're, again, I don't have a map with me, but. Lot four is the lot north of lot three and they share a property line. North of lot four is Scout Lodge. So the developer's gonna be buying it, the council action for last month was. An agreement in principle by both parties to sell. For us to sell lot four and for that that ownership group to buy it, there's some details that need to be worked out on price and. Exact square footage that we're working through now. There is going to be a groundbreaking for that project, it's called Heritage Square. Hopefully sometime this summer and. They bought the property almost lot three almost two years ago, we're we're anxious to. To get that project going, so. Seen a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel with with lot three and now with lot four, lot four is primarily a parking lot. For lot three and there will be an agreement in our sale. To that ownership group that the city will continue to have you, so. That basically shared parking on lot four, basically what happened is the lender for that project. When they looked at the the site plan of the, the overall plan for the project. The whoever their lender is was concerned, well, you're. You're relying on lot four for your parking field, why don't you, that should be part of your project, so. Not to get into all the details, but that that's what precipitated. The the potential land sale, so we're hoping to get, come back to council with some closing documents sometime this summer and then hopefully have a groundbreaking.
So it's gonna be, how many levels?
It'll be a two-story building.
No sub, no, no sub-basin?
No sub-basin, two-story building with some patio, outdoor patio space for restaurants, some offices up on the second floor. Lots of open space along Village Parkway, if you remember the site plan, but it's a good looking project.
Also, the only parking is actually gonna be on one floor, it's not the two floors of parking and then the office?
Correct, the parking will all be surface parking on lot four and on the. The east side of the complex along Desert Avenue, there will be west of Desert, north of Village Parkway, there will be. A small parking field on lot three. So.
Okay.
That's pretty much an update on the square, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're coming right along and at some point, if you want to do a tour, we could. We could get you out there and and do a tour, so.
Great, turn the heat down.
We were out there at twelve thirty this afternoon and it was. They were, they were gonna let their people go around one o'clock, it was just, by then I think it was a hundred and. Ten or something and it was time for for their construction crews to get out of the heat.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's anything super critical, extra current event?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we'll, we'll go back to our agenda item B, a new single-family residential home.
Yeah.
Thank you for racing down. Okay. So John, you and I.
Yeah, I'll walk you through it, then after you go up to the podium and she can. Add whatever information that that I might have, might have missed. So this is a new single-family custom home, it's located at two seventy North Cloverfield Terrace. The applicant is here, Lydia, the owner is Victory Family Trust and the assessor's parcel number is five zero one sixty-eight six twenty. The single-family home, single-story. These are the description from the site plan, so we've got livable square footage of about thirty-six hundred square feet. There is a casita proposed at about two hundred and fifty square feet, the garage, three-car garage is nine hundred and twelve square feet. Entry tower, a hundred and nineteen square feet, there's a porch with ninety square feet and a patio out back with four hundred and twenty-two square feet, so. Total square footage under roof is about fifty-four hundred square feet. So where are we at on Cloverfield, this is a part of the Village at Litchfield Park Phase One subdivision. It's lot two oh one, two zero one and it's zoned R one eight PD with the planned development overlay. The building envelope for this subdivision is a twenty-five foot front yard, a thirty-foot rear yard and ten-foot side yards. And the subdivision plan was approved by the city council way back on October sixteenth of two thousand and one. Lot coverage is thirty percent and the applicant's right at that thirty percent. The building height by zoning. Is twenty-five feet, the actual CCNRs for the neighborhood, which we don't enforce, the city does not enforce CCNRs, is thirty feet. And Lydia's design is roughly around twenty-two feet. Here's a vicinity map, so just to give DRB. Some context, we're sitting about right here at Wigwam and Old Litchfield Road, so. Here's Litchfield Road, City Hall's across the street here, the golf course and then Cloverfield is north of Wigwam. And west of Litchfield and then off the map about right here is Camelback Road.
And it's all gated?
Correct. This is a fairly, I think it's a twenty twenty-four aerial photo from, if you're ever on the county assessor's website, they've had twenty twenty-four aerials now for a few months. This is a shot that I screenshot I took, so you can see it's one of the few vacant lots, when I first started here a couple of years ago. We did a, there's a vacant lot here and I did a custom home that I presented in part of the ERB early last year. For one of the few vacant lots in this part of town, it's a little bit off the map, you might remember that, this is one of the few, few lots left that we have in the city. So some design components, architectural design, I'd consider this farmhouse. It's a one-coat stucco system, the paint scheme from Lydia's plans, it's Truwan Williams with alabaster paint. Brick veneer with a white finish and wood posts, white oak stained, those accents are found throughout the design of the home. This is a, the hardy panel, that's not a typo, is the type of siding that's been chosen for the design. That's the alabaster paint color and there's also some accents around some of the windows and the two-car garage door, and I'll show you some plans here in a minute. There is a three-car garage proposed, it's side-loaded, so you don't, it's not a front entry. Designed, so Lydia's designed it really nicely with a turn-in three-car garage. It's located on the northwest side of the the building and I'll show you that in a minute, it's flush with the house. And then the roofing material would be a concrete flat tile roof with a dark charcoal color. This is a site plan, Commissioner Dari, or Member Dari. It it is difficult to read as you're packing and I'll just walk you through it, so here's Cloverfield. The darker color, I guess, is kind of a pewter color, is the actual driveway. And so the side entry garage, there's a single garage bay here and then the two-car garage here. The darker with the the crosshatching, that's the actual house with the building footprint. Lots of room for landscaping front and back. Looks like an RV gate on the, what'd be like the northwest side of the house. This is a floor plan, I know you typically don't concern yourself with. What the design of the home, I think it's kind of, kind of neat to see the, the design of the the home, it's actually got a team room, I did not grow up in a house that had a team room. Back in the day, but you could see the three-car garage, really nice floor plan layout. All the bedrooms get their own walk-in closets and the team room is off. Somewhere in there, but you know, great, great design, I think it'll be a great addition to the city. These were the building elevations, so this is top one, this is the front elevation off of Cloverfield. And then the side elevation without the garage, so basically kind of the southeast. Side of the house, lots of windows, here's the, the hardy board that I mentioned, the detailing. And then these are the other two elevations, this is the rear, so lots of glass in the back, back of the house. And then you can see the single car garage and then the two-car garage and again with some of those accent points as a. Design feature. As I mentioned, this is one of the few vacant lots left in the city, staff finds that the proposed project. Includes a design and building material package that will tie in nicely with the neighborhood, all of the development standards for R one eight PD zoning are being met. I think I mentioned this last time, we're trying to. I think I mentioned this last time, we're trying to do our staff reports where it's more, uh, in line with, um, the format. That we use for our council staff reports. It's a little confusing, so we have a recommended motion. And then a staff recommendation based over, they're the same, same materials, so the. The, should one of you wish to, um, make a motion, it would be to move to approve the single family residential project. Located at two seventy North, North Cloverfield Terrace, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant. Date of April fourth, twenty twenty-four and the following stipulations. Stipulation one, uh, comes from our building official, Brian Letucci. Uh, states an automatic fire sprinkler system shall be installed in group or occupancies. With a fire area greater than five thousand square feet under the roof. And then we have some Litchfield Park amendments, nine oh three point two eight. Litchfield Park Amendments to twenty eighteen fire code. And then stipulation two is from our city engineer, Keith Vernaski. Um. It's kind of conversational writing. I just looked at what he wanted. It, it says final design plans. Shall provide a grading and drainage plan, since this is a new build and we need to confirm finished floor elevations and drainage. Uh, Lydia has since provided us that study already and Keith has reviewed it. He's happy with it, so. We're moving in the right direction, so. That's the staff, um, update and, and recommendation. Happy to answer any questions if the board might, might have tonight.
Great, thank you. Um, Lydia, would you like to speak to the project and if there's anything that, uh, John, I left out, you can add?
Yeah, I'm Lydia Reyes and I'm. The designer for the Benetton residence. Um, yeah, so I had a gradient drainage plan, kind of preliminary. Um, I didn't know that we needed for that, uh, meeting, so I kind of pushed the engineer to. Get it sooner, so I sent it over so we can, uh. They can review it, but it's on the preliminary. Um, I have a kind of, uh. Email correspondence between the HOA saying that they, um, they like what they see. Other than, um, they want to see the, uh, final landscaping plan. And for some reason, they miss the color palette, so they are reviewing that, so. But I'm sure.
Okay, that was my first question, is it, if the HOA had approved? But that's, I mean, that's not our. That's a, that's another step you have to take, yeah.
Yeah, so I kind of highlight that and, um, and then, uh, just to say that we are working with them and then. So far as for the building itself, elevations and the. Um, the building itself, they like what they see. They're just reviewing the, uh, color palette and the landscaping plan. And we are working with our landscape architect to, to give us the final landscaping plan. Um, and just what I mentioned, I wonder where, where, they couldn't make it. They have an emergency, family emergency, so they just couldn't make it. Yeah. So, so we are working, so we're, uh. On the process and I just wanted to. Make sure that we pass this stage so we can keep moving on.
Any questions for staff or applicant? Okay. Someone like to make a motion or, uh? Accept the recommended motion?
I'll, I'll make one. Uh. Move to approve, single family residential project located on two seventy North. Cloverfield Terrace, subject to the provided by the applicant. Date of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four and the following stipulations. Number one, automatic fire sprinkler system. Number two, final design plan shall provide a grading and drainage.
I think that I would add one more, just the final approval by HOA before, for this issue.
Okay. I'll second it.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the last thing that we need to cover is any board member report on current events? And a motion to adjourn then.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Goodness.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
John?
Yeah.
Little sub-basin after sprinkled?